Yeah, apparently I figured it out. So I'll just record it from here. I'll do it on my computer instead of my phone. If the audio's bad on my computer, let me know that it doesn't sound good and then I'll, I'll shut the audio off on the computer and, and I'll get on the phone. But I'll keep the meeting going on my computer so I can record it. All right? All right, talk to you in a few. Bye.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'm recording now.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I guess it's me to bring this to order.
Janice?
Yeah.
Janice?
Yes.
Please everyone to mute their microphones unless they're speaking.
How do you move? Just put that hashtag?
Yeah. Mute when it lights up, mic microphone, then it's muted. You guys have to mute your phone if you're not speaking.
Am I muted?
Not at the moment.
Yes.
I can't hear nobody. Well, I hope I pushed the right button.
Hi Janice, Janice, this is Kim. I think people that have us on the speaker, that's what's creating a lot of reverb.
Right, they need to mute their phone if they're not speaking.
And also take it off the speaker.
That's what it is. But then you won't be able to hear the meeting, will you?
No, my experience is when you do these calls, if, if you get a number of people putting the call, the phone on the speaker on their cell phone, that's when you get a lot of the reverb and the static.
Okay.
So you have to put the phone up to your ear and listen, but you have to mute it when you're not the speaker.
Yes, okay, got it. All right, Mark, so you should go ahead.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Um, I'm, I would say we let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have roll call, please?
Okay, Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Larry, are you there?
Yeah, you got me.
Is that you Larry?
Anyone else?
Yeah, that's me, that's, this is me Larry.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
President.
Vice Chairman Smith? Hi.
President.
Are you on the, are you on the line, Kim?
Yes, can you hear me or not?
Yes, I can, sorry. Kind of went out of order. Commissioner Hoiska?
I'm here, Janice.
Okay, um, Commissioner Gibhart?
Here, home.
Commissioner Hopkins? Okay.
And do we have everybody then?
Yes, we have everybody.
Then can I have an approval of the minutes or the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
I second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor of approve the agenda, say aye.
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 Aye. Can I have an approval of the minutes, please, from February 11th and March 10th?
This is Janice. I'd like you guys to continue the minutes till the next meeting. I didn't get a chance to finish them.
Alrighty, then let's continue the minutes until next meeting. Do I get a, uh, a motion for that?
I move to continue the minutes to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Second.
Alrighty, I have a first and a second for, uh, motion to continue the minutes until next meeting. Moving on, is there any presentations or announcements? Uh, seeing none, um, I will go ahead and read this. Um, please, the, uh, this is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons may address the commission at this time on any subject within the jurisdiction of the Ione Planning Commission. Please be mindful by, uh, please be mindful of a four-minute time limit per person. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission may not take action or engage in a detailed discussion on a subject that does not appear on the agenda. However, matters that require commission action will be referred to staff for a report and/or recommendation for possible action at a future commission meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the planning commission at this time? Time in. Hearing none. Um, we have nothing on the consent. We now have a public hearing, um, for the site plan review. Um, at this time, I'd like to express that I am, I live next to this site. However, the, this document that's in front of me and, uh, my judgment is not impaired by anything that's going on. So I feel I'm confident to make a sound decision, uh, with what is moving forward. So, April, please take it away.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Can anybody hear me?
I hear you. Jake Herfle, I hear you.
All right. So the plans for, um, the renovation of this building were submitted to the building department and I received a routing fee on this item. And I, uh, had to point out that it requires a site plan review because it's not a residential building. So, um, that, we got that taken care of and got an application on file for site plan review. And, and the action that you would be taking tonight is to grant a site plan review permit for the renovation of the Train Depot Museum and the park. The, what I'm requesting does not include anything regarding the restrooms. I have nothing in terms of the exterior elevations of that building or even a firm location. So this is just for the depot structure which was moved to the site on Mill Street and the design of the park. So as, I think everyone is aware, this structure was relocated from a different location. And the intention is to renovate it using the historic building code so that it can be kept in as close as possible to its original condition while meeting any health and safety requirements. It has already had some work done to it, but the biggest challenge to this building is that it needs to be made ADA accessible in order to be used by the public. So there is a proposed extensive ramp that would be required to provide access. And one of the conditions that I have requested that the planning commission consider is that the railings on that ramp system should have a powder coated paint finish that will not require much maintenance and that will match the exterior of the structure so that when you look at it, the, the ramp system, it doesn't appear so obtrusive. And they have not selected an, an exterior color yet. So I've asked for a condition that that be approved by the city planner prior to them actually painting the structure. Um, I did, I hope that everyone received their hard copy of the plan. I didn't receive anything that was digital, so I couldn't, um, I couldn't make that available to you to, to look at on your computer, so I hope that everybody got their hard copy in time. The design of the park, um, is, is quite minimalist. The idea is that it would provide primarily paths of recreation with a location in the center that could be used for a shade structure and a gathering place and then a small, um, children's play area. Otherwise, um, it would be primarily turf and, and it would be, uh, designed to be a, a green space adjacent to the museum so that it could be used in concert with people that might be visiting and, and then would want to stretch their legs and, and give their children a place where they could be more active, which wouldn't be appropriate inside the museum building. So I think we're on the right track here. Um, the, the actual structural plans are still under review by the building department. Um, so those, that will, that will come to me for plan checks before it moves forward. But the site plan review, I think we could go ahead and, um, move forward on that this evening. And then I will take this as an information item to the city council at their June 2nd meeting so that they're aware of the action that the planning commission took and, and what's being proposed. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone?
I have, this is Jake Herfle. Um, I hope you hear me. This is first time on the conference call. I talked to Weatherby today and he believes by, uh, next week, the actual plans for the restrooms and the shade structure, uh, will be available to you. You know, I'll get them there as soon as I can. I thought they were included with the first drawing, but I guess Weatherby didn't understand it. Uh, we're contracting with a place structure outfit and they will handle the complete place structure part of it. And I will also have that to you once we, uh, as a committee, select the best one. And, uh, all, everything, all this stuff will be done with your approval. There is a railroad book out there that states the colors that the building originally was. We will be getting that to you and, uh, hopefully be able to answer all your questions.
That sounds great, Jake. Um, I would, I would defer to the planning commission since we don't have any information on the restroom facility yet. We can come back with another application for site plan review of that. We can defer this until we have everything. You can, um, you can approve this and, and ask staff to review the restroom facility. I, I will leave that up to the planning commission to determine what pathway they want to take here.
Thank you.
Does anyone have the commissioner?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that we approve it tonight and then let staff, you know, with Jake and Larry's input, figure out the details of the bathroom and all that. But I'd say we just approve it tonight and get it going.
This is Kim, I'm fine with that approach.
Yeah, agreed. This is Amber. That makes sense, especially if the plans are coming next week. I would hate to hold up any progress.
I do have, does anyone have any questions on, uh, what we currently see?
I have a question for, for April. April, this is Kim. Did you receive any, did you receive any input or comment from members of the public on this agenda item?
No, I did not.
This is Larry Rhodes. I, I, Mr. Bowe wanted to know about where the bathrooms at and Jake presented him with the plans that showed him where the bathrooms were at because he didn't have one. And the color of the building is kind of set by, um, what SP painted the buildings at that time. I mean, it's, they're painted, they painted the same colors and I can't remember. Some kind of a yellow and a brownish color, I believe. I'm colorblind, so. But I got it written in a book that's, um, so the color will basically be whatever, because you've got to keep it historical if we're ever going to get any grants out of this thing. That's the only comment I have on it.
Well, Larry, thank you for mentioning Mr. Bowe because I did have a conversation with him. He, um, he, basically by the time I talked to him, somebody else had talked to him and he had gotten information that satisfied him, so he didn't make a formal comment about it. But he was interested in the location of the restrooms. And as I told him, you know, I didn't have any information about the exterior of that. And then regarding the exterior color selection, that really was my concern. I want to make sure that, um, that it's done with the historic colors as it should be. I had the privilege of working on the Train Depot restoration for Sassoon City. And, um, I know a lot of people were shocked when they saw the, the station repainted, but it was painted in a historically accurate way and I think it looks great that way. So I, I would recommend the same thing here.
Um, this is Mark. Um, I have, oh, Mark Hawkins. Um, is parking adequate for the area or for this park?
Well, it's, it's... There is adequate parking for what's anticipated to take place there. Obviously, if some large event occurs, you know, there's going to be overflow parking on city streets in the neighborhood. That, that will happen.
Well, that or they're going to be over at the junior high, so.
Yep, that's another, that's another option. That's true.
Because I do know that there's really no parking on West Morelet.
There is really no parking over there. Yeah, parking does need to be considered.
You've got the whole area by the high school or the junior high. I think there's absolutely plenty of room over there. Shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah. Well, that and I can also see them going over to the Mormon church and also using some of their parking over there. So.
The Mormon church does have gates that they close their parking sometime.
Uh, well, they have one section that is open. Um, and then the whole back section is, is gated. So. That was my only concern was just parking, if that was adequate for it.
I'm Larry Rhodes. I'd like to mention that actually where the school junior high parking lot is owned by SP. That does not belong to the school, so that can be used as parking too.
Wealth of information.
Alrighty then, um, any other questions, any other comments?
Uh, just, just one comment. This is Mark Gibhart. It looks like this was going to come back anyway by necessity for a site plan review, but some years ago, I had requested that this come back before the planning commission, before anything final because, uh, Christopher Jordan, our planner at the time, had that whole front park thing set as a parking lot. And I'm, I'm just really happy that it's turned out this way. That's all.
Well, thank you, sir. Um, if no other comments, um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll do it if you like. I move that we adopt resolution number PC 2020-04. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Ione approving the site plan review per, permit for the Train Depot Museum and Park.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
This is Kim, I'll second it.
I have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 No nays? Then I believe it moves forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Um, then now item two, which is Howard Park revision of the master plan update review. Take it away, April. Are we there?
I'm sorry, I'm dabbing away with my, um, mute on. Sorry for that.
Alrighty.
Okay, let me start over again. Um, this could also be called a, as well as a revision, it's a correction to the conceptual map. The whole idea behind the conceptual map when the Howard Park Master Plan was adopted was that, uh, the city didn't know exactly where facilities would go. And so the idea was to lay out a conceptual plan for how facilities might be located in the park over time. And so one of the things that I would call a correction more than a revision is simply where the horseshoe pits are. They are not located in the spot that was anticipated in the conceptual review map. So that's being cleaned up. And then there is an actual, uh, you know, significant moving of the tennis courts and basketball courts closer to where Evelyn Bishop Hall is located. So, um, this conceptual map will continue to remain conceptual and as things change over time, um, we may come back and do some adjustments like this again. But the idea is to get something that's more, that more closely aligns with what the city's intentions are so that if grant funding is sought or grant funding that's been acquired, that we have an appropriate map to submit with that grant application saying this is, this is where these facilities are going to go. Um, the, we, there was a mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Howard Park Master Plan that analyzed all the sequoia impacts of the proposed future development. And so because of the plan to relocate the tennis and basketball courts, there did need to be an addendum to that mitigated neg deck making sure that there weren't going to be any greater impact from putting those facilities in a different location. And since they were, are actually going pretty much in the place where the horseshoe pits had been anticipated to go, those impacts had already been accounted for in the mitigated neg deck. So I simply prepared an addendum to it and, um, that will, that will be placed on file along with the mitigated neg deck to show that the city did consider any additional impact. So that, that's really this in a nutshell is just to clean up this conceptual map and to make sure that we have a document that shows that any sequoia impacts have been considered. Um, this will actually go for a full public hearing at city council as well. That's the way that the city manager wanted to do this. So in addition to your, your public hearing and your recommendation to the council, it will have a public hearing at city council on June 2nd.
Alrighty, um, does anybody have any questions?
I, this Larry Rhodes. The only, only thing I would, I'm glad they're going to have is go forward to council because I think we need to get some more people input that's worked on this and see if they agree with where they need to put the basketball court and the tennis court. So I, that's just my opinion. There's a lot of people put a lot of time in that place and I don't know if they know about this. I would just, thank you for letting us know that it's going to go forward to council. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, Chairman, you should probably open the public hearing.
Um, then I shall open up the public hearing. Sorry about that. Um, anybody from the public or? Alrighty, hearing none. Janice, are we getting anything? Alrighty, then I will close the public hearing.
I just had a quick question. I'm not seeing that they have the dog park on the map. Am I not seeing it or is it not here?
It is now the maintenance facility area.
Well, I saw that, but I was, it, is it, are we, okay, is that the proposed? Did I miss that? I mean, I was just, that was a big thing with Accurate had put that dog park in and I've just, is it being relocated? I mean, I, I don't care. I'm just wondering because, uh, again, there was some public, you know, noticing of these things. So if we're going to go and, and amend maps and conceptual plans, I'm just, you know, in the interest of accuracy, where, you know, what happens there. So that's all.
So Amber, are you saying that there has already been a decision about that location? That should be requested on the conceptual?
Yes, there is a dog park, right.
That's not shown on the conceptual map?
See, yes, that's, it's where the maintenance facilities are.
Correct.
That's actually where the dog park has been located. The trailer that used to be there is no longer there. Um, it has been cleared, uh, pretty much all the brush with what few trees are there and it has been fenced in and it is utilized as a dog park.
Okay, so the conceptual map probably should have come back at that point. To have that correction made. Um, so what I would suggest is that I just get a, a recommendation from you to add that to the conceptual map and then take the, the revised map to public hearing on June 2nd. And if there's anything else that anybody sees that didn't get on that conceptual map, please tell me now. I'll be glad to take care of it.
This is Jake Herfle. Um, I hope I can speak up now. Uh, there was talk about taking the old stage down and a group was going to put an amphitheater in that drainage there uh, and try to get a place where bands and stuff could come play and have. That old building's kind of falling down anyway. It was tentatively approved to take the old building down by the city, so I would hope we could put that on the map also.
Okay.
So, I take it that's where the old snack bar was, what the fire department always uses for their tri-tip?
I believe that was high enough up the hill that it may not be included, but yeah, it was basically between the dunking booth and the old stage where it has a few bleachers around it.
Yeah.
Right, it's kind of, yeah, it's in that vicinity between the playground and the shaded structure, it's, it's right in there, I know exactly what you're talking about with that stage, and, and it's, it's in that vicinity, I don't think that is specifically represented, but if it's already been approved, yes, that, that should be added more specifically, probably, to this map.
I don't know if it's been actually approved-
Like an amphitheater, okay.
I know that it, uh, the committee doing, talked to the, the city manager about it, but as far as anybody actually approving it, I can't answer that part.
Right, I'm not sure that the, the amphithe-, I'm not sure that, uh, the stage is on there, um, I mean, it could be one of these small buildings, I can't quite, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not the world's greatest map to start with.
Right.
And then, as it's been, as things have shifted around, um...
Oh, it looks great, I really like seeing the soccer fields and the baseball, it looks great, it's a really, it's a nice, um, it's a nice overview, I like it, nice to see it. But yeah, I was just wondering about the dog park, that was a big thing, when that all went, went through, so.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm happy to, um, I'm happy to try to work to get this more closely to reflect what, what is there and what we think will be there, so, um, I can, we can bring this back to Planning Commission, if you wanna do that, rather than, um, send this on to council, or we can, you can give staff direction to make those changes and take it to council, I'm happy to do it either way.
Does anybody else have any questions, or comments?
No, I, I'm Larry Rhodes, I just like to say that I think that, the thing Jake was talking about, I forgot about it, he's absolutely right, I remember him talking about that, so, I, I want, if we can get that, you know, done before, or talk to somebody about it, so it's on the plan, so we ever get around to doing it, it's there. So, we don't have to spend money redoing this map. I won't comment.
Okay, um, any other comments?
I just, uh, Larry, are you good with just sending this on to City Council, approving it now, and trusting April with you guys' input to correct the map?
Well, I was kinda hoping that would be the plan, I mean, I can't see wasted money to bring it back, if we can just get this put in like the other one.
Yeah, I agree.
And if, um, if anybody doesn't have any objections, then I'll, so, entertain a motion.
Um, I'll do it if you like, this is Mark Gebhardt, let's see. I move we adopt Resolution PC 2020-05, a resolution of the Planning Commission approving the revised Howard Park Master Plan Update Conceptual Map with additions and corrections as needed.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, uh, Larry Rhodes.
I have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
No nays? Alrighty, it's moved forward with those corrections to the next, uh, council meeting?
It's actually not the next council meeting, it's the June 2nd council meeting.
Oh, okay, June 2nd then, I apologize. Um, then our regular agenda item, number three.
Okay, um, uh, this is my, this is my, um, embarrassing little secret, so, I know that the city is supposed to do a general plan progress report every year, but I have not done one because it's very expensive, and I feel bad that I even had to do that this year, but since we think that we're gonna get the SB 2 grant and we're going to be updating the general plan, um, the state was on top of us, and so, they called me and said, "Where's your 2019 general plan annual progress report?", and I said, "Oh, I'm working on that." So, so I did, and I put it together, and first of all, I want to thank all the city staff that assisted, the city manager, the city engineer, public works, building, fire, and police, they all contributed to updating, um, this general plan report. And what it contains, if you look through it, what it actually is, it's pulling out every action item that's included in the general plan, and then providing a response on where the city is at in achieving that action item. So, it, it really was a lot of, it was a lot of work to put this together, um, I'm glad that it's done, and I think that, that, you know, updating this in future years will probably be a lot simpler, but, um, I really did just hate to charge the city to do something like this that is not really, it doesn't really give the city, I don't think, very, I don't think it's that helpful. But anyway, this is not a, this is not a public hearing, this is just an information item for you, so, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, um, and your resolution is simply to accept it and place on file. So, if anyone's read the whole thing and they disagree with any of the responses, I'm, I'm happy to see about that and tweak it if it needs it. Uh, otherwise, same thing, this will be going, this is actually going to the council meeting next Tuesday, since it doesn't require a public hearing, um, for them to do the same thing, accept it and place it on file. So, again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Alrighty, does anyone have any thi-, any questions, comments?
Yes, I'm Larry Rhodes, I definitely have a question, on page 11, I believe it is, it's C1R-1-2-2. It's about the bypass study completed in 2018 in segment F and G, which I love, though that's 88. But I don't like acceptance, we didn't get to vote on this, this is a study that they said was a presentation at our meeting was supposed to, we were supposed to vote on it, we had all the public people, that they did not notify on their property that this study affects, and the city, the ATCT, after several people on the property wrote a letter, suspended this for a while, and I just happened to get on the ATCT things again, now I call it a planned study only, and there, and this kinda sounds like this is what this study, we're really going with this study, and the whole study, we didn't, us planners did not even get to vote on this, they just presentation to it, so I have a disagreement with that, totally.
Um, this is April again, I hear you, and I have pointed out to the people in charge that our general plan shows a specific alignment for the bypass, and that a different alignment cannot be adopted by the city council unless there is a revision made to the circulation element. And that certainly requires public hearings and input from the public before the circulation element would be revised. So, the, as I understand it, where it's stuck right now is, um, is funding, and not just for the bypass itself, but just to finish all the environmental work and the revision to the circulation element, all those things are gonna cost money, and especially given the situation that the city's in, you know, that we're facing because of this coronavirus emergency, I have no idea what the timeline for seeing this happen would be. So, all this document is providing you tonight is a snapshot of what's happened in 2019, and, um, this response was provided to me by the city engineer.
Well, it, this Larry Rhodes again, the only thing, it really bugs me, we had a, we ha-, we got a bunch of people that come to this meeting, and we didn't get to vote on it, and this cost us taxpayers over $200,000 for this study, and I think that was totally wrong, that's my opinion, thank you.
Um, any other comments? Any other questions? Anyone? Um, I'll open it up to the public, does anybody in the public have any questions or comments? Alrighty, uh, Janice, are you getting anything from anyone? Then, hearing none from anyone, um, I'll close the public comment. Um, then, uh, does, again, does anybody have anything to say, anything else to add? Um, with that, then I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we had-
Well, I'll do it.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number PC 2020-06, a resolution of the City of Ione Planning Commission accepting and placing on file the 2019 general plan annual progress report.
I have a, a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, this is Kim, I'll second the motion.
I have a first and a second, all in favor to place this, to pass the resolution and place this on file, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
One nay? Alrighty, the ayes have it. Um, Item K, the election of the chairman and the vice chair.
I nominate Mark Hopkins, chairman.
I second that motion.
And who is vice chair?
I make a motion that Mark Gebhardt is our vice chair.
Rather not, you say you don't wanna do it?
Sure, um...
I nominate Amber Hoys-
You would be so good! I'll leave it up to the, the board, we'll have to vote, maybe we'll vote, we both, we nominate each other, can we do that? I don't care either.
Well, let's see, neither one of us- There's no seconds to anything yet.
Kim, do you have any suggestions?
Well, uh, first of all, uh, since this is my last meeting, I don't think I should vote on, on the future slate, but, uh, no, I don't have a recommendation one way or the other.
Are you sure, sir? Alrighty, then-
I, I think, I think either-
I'll, I'll do it if you don't want to, it's fine, I mean, I, I'm, it's fine, I'll, I, I can do the vice, the, yeah, the vice chair, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any seconds yet, so, do we have a second on Mark Hopkins as chairman?
I'll second, uh-
Oh, can I make a second? It's hard not to be happy for you guys, well-
Okay.
I would renominate Amber Hoyska for vice chairman, chairwoman, chairperson.
Say, when who that was?
So, we'll have Vice Chairman Tru-, uh, Troublemaker? So-
Amber?
It was not Mark!
I, I second Amber being, uh, vice chair.
Larry?
Alrighty, so, we currently, so, is everybody pleased with the way the first and the seconds have gone for chair and vice chair? If all in favor, say aye.
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 Alrighty.
I love you, Amber.
Okay, then, uh, Mr. Smith, it's been a pleasure, I will say that, um, before we move on to our item, the, the planners' report and all that, so I just wanna say that, uh, it's been a pleasure to work and serve with you, sir, uh, may, uh, you enjoy your new endeavors in the town far, far away up the hill, and down in the little bow.
My, Mark, I appreciate that, I, and I'm not gonna be a stranger, but I've enjoyed my time on the Planning Commission, and it's been nothing but positive, and, uh, thank you for putting up with me.
Okay.
This is Larry Rhodes, I, Kim, I'd, Kim, I'd really, I appreciate you being here, and maybe you can come down and visit us once in a while.
I, I can do that, yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll come when, when Amber brings those cookies in for the Christmas party.
I have really buffing up my baking, so you guys are gonna be in first rate this year, for sure, really honed some recipes last couple months, so, um, no, it's really, it's unfortunate, we don't get to do something to really acknowledge, I think, Kim's contributions over, how many years have you been serving on this board, Kim?
I will have to defer to Janice, I don't remember.
I would say it's at least ten, at least ten years. It's like an institution, it feels sad, like a vintage era.
When I was appointed, uh, Mark, the, the two Marks were the, were already on the commission, and I think Mark, Mark Gebhardt was appointed, uh, the year before I was appointed, that's what I remember.
Yep, that's right.
Okay.
Well, um, Kim, I just, this is Janice, I just wanna say thank you, I appreciate everything you've done, you've made it so easy for me being part of the commission, and we're gonna miss you.
Well, I appreciate that, Janice, and I, I just wanna say that, uh, the city is well served by all of you on the commission, and by you, Janice, for your many years of service, and, and with April, uh, it's, it's been nothing but positive interaction, and we don't always agree, we, we usually come to a consensus, but I think when people have appeared before our Planning Commission, we listen to them, and I, I think we, we indulge their, uh- planning commission, we listen to them and I, I think we, we indulge their, uh, their input and, uh, they get a fair shake before the planning commission.
I agree. I, I totally agree.
Same here, sure, same here. Well, Lynn, let's try to, let's finish this all up. Uh, April, do you have any, uh, planning reports, future agenda items?
Well, really, for my report, I'd just like to echo everyone else's sentiments and say that, um, Commissioner Smith, you are really gonna be missed. You have left big shoes for somebody else to come in and fill and it's, it's been a pleasure as staff to have worked with you and echoing everybody else, I wish you nothing but the best in your future.
Uh, thank you, April, and you've been, uh, you have, uh, compared to some of the other people that have, uh, worked with us as city planners, you have been a breath of fresh air and I think everybody, uh, feels the same way.
Well, thank you so much and I really do hope that we can all get together for a Christmas party and, and, uh, hope that you would come back and join us.
I, I would, uh, be there with bells on.
(laughing)
We'll hold you to that, sir.
Absolutely.
So, well, with that, um, it is 6:51 and I call this meeting adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And until next time, folks.
Thank you.
Alright, happy trails.
To you too, sir.
Bye.
To you too.